We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, July 11, 2023. And Item B, Call for a Meeting and Set Tuesday, August 1, 2023, as a date for hearing on Certified Assessment Corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, Commissioners. Okay, thank you. All right, thank.
Want to drink a cup?
Yeah. I know. Okay, there we go. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, or citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
My Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. While I'm still struggling with my protest, I have to have that done and ready for my short 15-minute interview with a real estate professional next week. And as I sort through all my papers since 1971 on my property, I found some errors in various things on the websites for the valuation and comparable properties, we call it. But also looking back two or three protests, each time that I protested, there was a different market area. And I didn't move. You know, I think that's, has to get changed because market areas shouldn't change. It's either the whole city or it isn't the whole city. But from street to street, section to section, lot to lot, no, it shouldn't. The comparables listed on those, sometimes there were 14, sometimes there were 20. And in my area, every street, the houses are so different and they are so different-sized, maybe two blocks away, the lots are a little bit larger. But what I cannot do is walk into the person's yard and look in the backyard to see how large their garage is or their attached shed or how many improvements they've made back there. But I get taxed on that stuff. I get taxed on what they call a concrete slab patio. But my patio isn't the same as most of theirs. And I'm not a corner property. Those corner properties in that area usually have like two lots. So it's really extremely difficult for a citizen to put together a convincing case against the real estate professional, whose job it is to get the best price, of course. And there's outside investors not living in this city that want to pay the best price. That's what we saw over the last few years driving the prices way up. Again, that is totally unfair. You need to go to your legislative people down in Lincoln and get them to change that. I know you blame that on them because they set the rules as a selling price, basically. That's just not fair. I don't sell my house every year. I neither do most of my neighbors. But when they do, it's such a big jump that it forces the rest of us out of the neighborhood because you're going to value our properties, whatever they sold out yesterday. Not fair. Totally not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have a couple, a few resolutions. Resolutions D through F. There is no need for executive session, so it could include, the motion could include adjournment. So we'll do Resolutions D and F right now. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions, comments on D or F? Please vote.
One moment, please. I appreciate your patience, sorry. Moving slow this morning. No, you're fine. It's, all right. It should be available to you now. Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go back to Item E. And again, there is no need for executive session, so the motion could include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
And Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes. Commissioner Boyle abstaining. All other Commissioners voting yes.
We will now move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Corrections Meeting Held Tuesday, June 13, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments? Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda?
Ed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street in Omaha. I'm assuming the ARPA use of funds for the jail is not on the agenda, so I will speak to that. I've spoken before. I come dressed purposefully. This is my Blue Jay basketball shirt. And I'm branding the alternative that I have been promoting, the Blue Jay alternative, because it's risk-free and benefit-rich and a good bet, as all bidders have to worry about risk and benefit. Basically, the plan is, and I talked a little bit about it last time, you got to free me $1 million to use at the jail. They won't, you could build a Taj Mahal, small mini one for $1 million. You can do anything you want and the treasurer doesn't care. My suggestion is that that $1 million go to some sort of common area at the jail that would be designed by hands-on mental health experts. Then take X million, leave a lot for what's going on on 42nd Street. That would be directed to programs, staffing it, bringing in experts on the area that I find much more useful after 23 years on the Board of Mental Health and a lot of work in the community on substance abuse disorders. These people that are under our jurisdiction, the ones under sentence, can really get a lot of use out of basically 12-step programming that's going to work throughout their lives. Failure rate's high, like any other mental illness. But you give a young prisoner who's under your jurisdiction a good clinical workup like that, that's great, but I'm not designing this program for you. I'm telling you, the next part of that program is to get your experts out there at 42nd Street to tell you what their manpower needs, what they want to bring in from the community, and what that program should look like. But don't turn to experts that are architects and engineers or builders or real estate people. I'm not up here just talking. I'm going to give you some law. Blue Jay law, but law from the Congress of the United States. The alternatives, two alternatives are specifically, and you've only got one alternative before the basic plan, and that's the Kavanaugh alternative, but the Blue Jay alternative I've got to be considered, too. And you compare, this is right from the regulations, you compare the, at least two alternatives and explain why the proposed one that you want to go with, which is not decided yet by any, is the superior one. So I'd say the Blue Jay one is the superior one. You ought to start working on it. Another thing, the regs also say you don't have to commit this money until the end of '24, and then you got to spend it by the end of '25, so there's no time problem. Then I'm going to read specifically from another important. Yeah, can't you hear me? In the mic? Hear me now? This is straight from the regs. And it's quoted verbatim.
One minute.
I better read fast. Well, I won't. It's quoted verbatim by Deloitte. I should have worn my glasses. I can't even read my own writing, but it indicates jails are suspect. Don't spend the money on jails. That's what Deloitte says, and that's what, 31 CFR 4391. I repeat, 31 CFR 4391 states, and it goes on to explain why it's not generally the best use of ARPA's intended money. It actually then goes on in areas around CFR 4351, talks about, spend that money on pre-jail stuff, on programmatic stuff that keeps people out of jails. So I'm telling you, remember the brand. Blue Jay alternative. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from our Director of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. I believe you have your report for the month of June in front of you. Training to enclosure number one, Administrative Services. We concluded the fiscal year $34,458 under budget while also being able to encumber funds to complete safety renovations projects that transcend into fiscal year '24. $382,910 were spent on overtime costs in June. This is a slight increase over the previous month, which is largely attributed to recertification trainings we are conducting now that we have achieved high staffing levels. And our records department processed over $800,000 in bond payments. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanctions Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 23 individuals into community corrections and saved a combined 101 bed days in the jail. Work release admitted 34 individuals and house arrest admitted 72. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 21 individuals and one individual achieved a GED. 92 individuals were admitted into the reentry services, therapeutic, community housing units. Pretrial services. We are still working on full integration of data systems to give you more data. But what I can report is there were 264 individuals placed on pretrial release. 1,029 were individuals were supervised on pretrial release over the course of the month. 477 individuals were placed, had a condition of 24/7 sobriety. And 145 individuals were supervised using GPS monitors, saving around 3,000 bed days in the jail. I do want to point out, and going to enclosure number two on page 20, some progress. It's a trend, I would say, albeit somewhat small, on the racial disparities. We are seeing more people of, more minorities being placed on pretrial release as a percentage of the whole. We, at our peak, a few months ago, there were, it was 44.8% Caucasian, and the next largest group was 37.9% African-American. Those, the percentage of Caucasians on pretrial release has dropped nearly three points to 42, while the African-American population has increased to 42%. That was, I'm still not going to make any predictions. In the long haul, it's too early, but that this early trend is one hoped-for outcome when you give the judges choices that don't, that place less of an emphasis on cash bond, that the playing field is hopefully leveled a bit when individuals are given the opportunity to participate in programs that supervise them rather than just having to pay a bond to get out. So it's early. It's not a big change, but it is a change. Enclosure number three, Compliance. We are preparing for our American Correctional Association audit. That will take place October 30 through November 3. And as I've mentioned in the previous report, we have 634 standards that we have to comply with between the jail and community corrections. And then our actual accreditation, assuming the audit goes as expected, will occur at their ACA's winter conference in Washington, DC in early January. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Eight officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in June. Five officers were promoted to correctional officer two. As of June 30, we were 98% staffed. After shifting our focus to required training for various recertification, we have an academy expected to bring 20, perhaps 21 new officers, which will start next week. Several staff members received service awards for 20 and 25 years of service to the Douglas County Department of Corrections, and I want to thank them for their loyalty and commitment to our mission. Enclosure number five, Population. And Commissioners, if you do flip through that, you'll see that we have made some changes to that report, tried to streamline it a little bit and make it a little more user-friendly as I'm continuing to work on section by section with our staff. We had 1,268 admissions. That's an increase of 47 from the previous month. There were 1,319 releases. Our high count was 1,145, and our low count was 1,072. Our average daily population was 1,103, and that is an increase of 55 from the previous month, not uncommon when we get into the summer months, but still trending lower than we have in the past. Custodial sanctioned bed days were 67. That was a decrease. The US Marshal population decreased slightly. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population remained stable. Probation violations remained stable. 18% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. That's up a little bit from the previous month. 65% of our population were minorities. That's down slightly from the previous month. 14% of our population were female, and 18% of our population were homeless or near homeless, and that is a modest increase. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,140 intake screenings and 367 health and physical assessments. It was a particularly busy month for off-site medical. There were inmates were sent out 32 times for emergent medical care, and six of those were by 911. There were nine hospital admissions, which resulted in 79 days of hospitalization. And that, as I've mentioned before, that's like having an extra housing unit staffed 24 hours a day for the equivalent of 79 days during the month because we do have to have staff at the hospital. So that was a particularly, which probably also contributed to our slight increase in overtime. There were 46 off-site medical appointments, specialty appointments. Due to the expiration of the public health emergency and a depletion of our COVID vaccine supplies, vaccines clinics are no longer regularly being offered, and we will await further guidance on how vaccines will be distributed and administered going forward. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 185 initial psychiatric assessments, and there were 170 initial mental health, or excuse me, 470 mental, initial mental health assessments. There were 83 individuals placed in, for mental health emplacements in the infirmary, which are basic, for the most part, suicide precautions. There were 200 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols, and that, Commissioners, is the highest that I can recall. Referrals to community-based mental health services. 35 Board of Mental Health referrals were made, and that is perhaps the highest number on record. It's least, is the most that I can recall in my tenure, in my current role as Director and previously as Community Corrections Manager. There were five transfers to the Lincoln Regional Center, and 46% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. Enclosure number eight, Security Operations and Our Honor Guard. There was one deployment of our crisis negotiation team, which resulted in a successful de-escalation without force being required to relocate a suicidal individual to a safer housing location. The CNT team trained to recertify for use of the rescue phone, which is a hostage negotiation phone that we have. Our CERT team, Emergency Response Team, there was one deployment for a cell extraction for an individual threatening suicide, and that individual was moved without force being required. There were 21 searches of housing units conducted. Contraband include items modified for tattooing, modified items to create a spark, notes on how to use Cash App to purchase contraband, a powdery substance which was not tested due to our fentanyl protocols, and suspected K2, which was submitted for testing, though the results were inconclusive. Our Honor Guard provided services at the Justice Center dedication ceremony as well as the presentation of colors at the College World, at a College World Series game. And I have a new enclosure for you this month, and I'll be actually combining this with another one in subsequent reports. Enclosure number nine, Our Staff Development Wellness and Retention. 30 individuals were interviewed for correctional officer positions, and 30, and there were 35 applications that were received. 40 officers completed field training. 11 staff members utilized the wellness and retention office for assistance for the first time, and an additional 18 officers received ongoing services. Two staff members were referred to external mental health resources. Yoga for first responders classes were offered weekly, and utilization of our peer support app had increased from the previous month. Other noteworthy items are safety-wide, facility-wide safety project continues. When concluded, all units with, all housing units with a top tier will have safety netting installed, and all top bunks are being replaced. The safety netting has already paid dividends as two incidents of attempted self-harm were thwarted. The male and female infirmaries have reopened in their designated location after renovations were completed. Two other units have now been closed for safety enhancement renovations. This project will continue throughout most of the balance of 2023 and hopefully, hopefully not into 2024. We made plans during June to reopen the lobby to public visitation, and those plans were finalized and visitation resumed on July 5. And lastly, Commissioners, I'm going to give you a final look back, my last bask in the glory of hosting the American Jail Association Conference. You may have all received this magazine as you are, we made you all members. And I wanted to do a couple of quotes from the American Jails magazine, and then I have a little video to play that our staff put together. Louis Caniones, who is the newly-installed American Jail Association President, says, "The Douglas County Department of Corrections served as the host agency. A huge shout-out goes to Douglas County for acting as such a cordial and welcoming host. Many conference attendees participated in their local jail tours and commented favorably on the experience." And Chris Daniels, the AJA Director, also says in this, in the American Jails magazine, "Best conference ever." I heard that phrase repeatedly from our AJA, at our AJA conference in Jail Expo in Omaha. I heard it from our exhibitors, our attendees, our presenters, our program planning committee, and our Board of Directors. If you missed, if you were not in Omaha at the Omaha conference, you really missed out. It was good vibes all the way around, and everyone who attended fell in love with Omaha. It was good vibes all the way around, and everyone who attended fell in love with Omaha." And Karen's going to help me.
Thank you for indulging me with that, commissioners. I'm ready for your questions.
All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for that. A couple of things on your report. The average daily population, I think it's on page twenty-eight, comes in at about a thousand and three relative to last month. That's roughly the same, maybe down a few?
You're on page, which page are you looking at, Commissioner?
I'm just saying.
Oh, it's, it's up a little. It's up a little. It's one thousand one hundred and three.
Okay. Month-to-month figures, I think we've talked about this, would give us some context if you included those. The personnel on page three, I believe, staffing at the CO-1, the critical corrections officers level, is ninety-eight point one percent, which is very good. Again, we've talked about this before, that this staffing, I guess, in my mind, would be a personnel issue, but in the.
Commissioner, that is one of the reorganizations that I'm working on for the report.
Yeah, it's administrative services, I'm just saying, I don't know why that is, but the population is put under personnel. The inmate population is not personnel. So I think staff is personnel, inmates are not personnel. I'm just saying, it might take some rectification, just clerically there. And then, the racial demographic on page thirty-two, which does go to the population, shows a forty-two and a half percent African-American leading, again, as it consistently does. And then you point out that the pretrial release program has shown an increase in African-Americans, I believe that's on page twenty. And that generally reflects, if I'm reading this right, their representation in the general population. If they're at forty-two percent on the pretrial release, they're forty-two percent in the general population, that's about the same. Is that right?
It is.
Okay.
For this month.
The thing that's not the same is the consistent forty-two, forty-three, forty-four percent representation in the pretrial release population of Caucasians, which is consistently above their thirty-four-ish percent population. So they're still way overrepresented in the pretrial release population, that hasn't changed.
They are, and they're, and they're.
Is that, is that correct?
It is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. The one thing I noted there, and this is probably just an oversight, is if you go to page twenty, percentage of individuals supervised on pretrial release by race, unlike the racial demographic breakout, it does not appear to have a Hispanic category, has white, black, Asian, Native American, unknown, and Pacific Islander. And the demographic on the actual population has a specific Hispanic breakout. Is there a reason for that?
The only reason I can give you is that these reports come from two different people. The, the jail population report comes from our admissions manager. I will, I will ask them to, to make that consistent.
Right, I mean, it should be consistent in one population demonstration and another population demonstration, and also give us an idea of how Hispanic inmates stack up versus this population, relative to their.
One minute.
Population percentages, which I think is something around sixteen and a half percent. The drug and alcohol abuse that I think is on page, can you, can you tell me real quick, is it page eight or page twenty?
There are probably multiple references to different programs.
Oh, page ten has a substance abuse.
Goal.
Chart at the bottom, and it shows very little participation. I mean, February showed, you know, four, April showed three, June showed one. I'm just wondering, do we have a more comprehensive?
Yeah, well, I, I.
Time.
I'll come back to that.
Okay. Mr. Boyle?
So thanks a lot, Mike. Just a few things. One is, in your report, you've often mentioned the number of bed days saved. This month it was three thousand and one. To me, I think it's important that it's, that's, that's a decent number, and I think it's important to also mention how that translates into how much taxpayer money is saved. So can you just go into the details of how much it costs to house someone?
Our, our current per diem is around a hundred and twenty, probably is going to be going up. If you, if you, if you took that figure, you know, you could, you could figure it that way by multiplying the number of bed days saved by a hundred and twenty, and get a figure that, of a cost savings. So we can, I can do that. There's more than one way to analyze this. You can look at it and translate it into housing units which are closed, and the cost of operating a housing unit, or you can look at it on an individual basis. But, but like I said, our per diem that we charge other agencies, charge the, the US Marshal Service, for example, is a hundred and twenty dollars a day.
So if you annualize that, we're talking saving taxpayers millions of dollars a year.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, so that's, I think, that's the importance of the pretrial services that we talk about. At the same time, we have to, and GPS monitoring and all that. At the same time, we have to be really careful that the, the pretrial services, while successful, it's, I know that we're gathering data, I'd still like to hear about recidivism rates at some point, and I know we're still trying to ramp it up far enough so we know those. Do you have any, any preliminary information on that?
Nothing significant that I can report yet, commissioners, and the, and Commissioner Boyle, the, the issue is, right now, the frustrating thing has been the, the building of the bridge between the court system and our pretrial case management system to push data. Our pretrial staff don't even know when somebody goes to court and gets off of pretrial. You know, they just have to manually go through periodically and check and see whose case got dismissed, or whose case was resolved. There's no automatic way that that feeds to our staff. So that is, when we get that, then we will be able to start checking criminal histories and, and start giving you some meaningful data.
Good, okay. And along, along those lines, just looking at the data, it looks like the bulk of the, the inmates are on, they're the felony pretrial population.
Yes, that's true.
So, so that tells me that they're not being managed through the court system very, very quickly or efficiently, is, can you tell, tell us what type of collaboration is done?
Yeah, so, well, felony cases are always going to take longer, and, and there have been some system-wide improved, criminal justice system improvements, which have decreased the number of people that spend time in jail for misdemeanors. Domestic violence, misdemeanor DVs are an exception to that, by, largely driven by state statute. But they have, you know, with, the system has responded positively in making sure people that don't need to be in jail, you know, that fewer of them actually are in jail. So by, as a percentage, what's left are the harder cases.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and those cases can take, you know, a, a felony case typically will probably wind its way through the court system if there aren't any, you know, extraneous delays in about a six-month period. You know, so those are cases where the bonds are going to be higher, even with our pretrial, you know, they, the judge may still probably leave a bond in place because these are mainly violent crimes. And, and if the person doesn't pay the bond, then they're going to be with us through the duration of their pretrial status. So they, that will always be our biggest chunk. And, but that's the main reason for it, those cases take longer, and the bonds are higher, so people aren't out.
Yeah, and it's just for, for numbers reasons, for other folks to hear. So if we have a thousand inmates in there, about over seven hundred.
One minute.
Over seven hundred of them tend to be those that are on the felony pretrial population. So that's a significant portion. It seems like there has been a lot of headway in the other populations, but if we really want to make a difference in the prison population, it sounds like focus needs to be on, on that particular subset more than anything.
Expansion of problem-solving courts, which have been coming, is a big, I think I can play a role in that. And our, I will be talking to this board in the future about further developments that we're doing with reentry services to kind of coordinate and become more of a feeder to those programs, because those can be a, a diversion from the state prison system, and with much better outcomes.
All right, okay, very good. Thanks, Mike.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks. Mike, to come back to a couple of things, I did find a different graph on the substance abuse on page seventeen, which shows the inmates in that program, and it seems to total from the three categories of completed, partially completed, not completed, for the current reported month of June, to be, I think, eighteen total, something like that, of the population?
Yep, so what I can tell you, Commissioner, is, is the, the.
I'm just asking, is that an accurate number?
So these, of the people who, no, not, it's not the whole number of people that participate.
Okay.
It's the people who were discharged during that month. It's reflection back on, how did the people who left the program do on that goal?
So of those, seven completed, of those eighteen, seven completed discharge, six partially completed discharge, five not completed discharge, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the overall population of that program is what?
So that's, that's the reentry assistance program, and that number is, there's usually about forty people, give or take, in that program, I can tell you specifically here.
Okay.
And, and the, those earlier numbers that you referenced that were much smaller, that was work release.
Yeah.
So those, those, those people are actually participating. Let me, I will go back to our.
Okay.
We've, we've always presented work release data, RAP data, house arrest data, all as separate buckets.
Right, right, right.
But, but now we, we do have services that transcend.
I, I got you. It'd be good if they were all together, is all I'm saying. Jumping around is a little problematic. You mentioned that the per diem for Douglas County Corrections is a hundred and twenty dollars?
That's what we currently charge the Marshal Service, yes.
Say again?
That's currently our, our bill to the US Marshal Service, yes.
Okay. And is it the same with ICE and the other?
We, we no longer have an ICE.
Okay.
And we are in the process, actually, of renegotiating with the city of Omaha.
Okay. And, you know, that's interesting because in comparison to the, our staff's estimate of the Douglas County Youth Centers per diem, it's like four hundred dollars. I'm just interested in that because it's a, it's a crucial statistic. If we've got a thousand-plus people at a hundred and twenty dollars a night, do the math, it's a big number. So you're sure that we're rock hard at a hundred and twenty dollars per diem, all in?
It, it is likely going to go up.
No, I'm saying right now, that that's an accurate number right now.
I'm a little hesitant to tell you the, because we're actually negotiating with the city, and I don't want to say numbers out loud.
It would seem to me that it might be significantly higher than a hundred and twenty dollars a day.
It's, it's higher, but it's nothing like, I mean, the staffing ratios are much different in adult corrections than they are in youth.
Sure, sure.
And so it, it's not going to be anything that approaches a per diem that you would see at a youth facility. It, it won't be in that ballpark.
Okay, and, and there's probably good reasons for that, and I know Mr. Alexander's here, maybe we can have that discussion, because it's a crucial number to the operation of both the youth center and the correctional center. It's like, what's a per diem of that population, which is significant, and in your case, very, very significant, because the population is so large. The idea that we have maybe forty people out of this population of over a thousand in our drug and alcohol program is interesting to me, because I don't know if that reflects the number of inmates who actually have significant drug and alcohol problems. It certainly doesn't reflect.
One minute.
The number of inmates in there on drug and alcohol-related charges.
So I'm going to, for next month, Commissioner, I'm. So, I'm going to, for next month, Commissioner, I'm going to have, we, there are two separate treatment programs, and one in the jail and one in community corrections. What we've been referencing here are the ones in community corrections.
Right.
There are also people who are no longer in our custody who continue to be in the community corrections program, because one of the great things about that program is it continues on for support for about six months afterwards. So, they, these numbers are artificially small.
I got you. The, the interest that I have is, because as we did the authorization of the analysis of what we should do at Corrections last week, a big part of that is, what should we do with the drug and alcohol population at Corrections? Inside Corrections, not released population, inside Corrections, with the existing vacant capacity, inside Corrections. And that's a big part of what we want to see our architect, Pavandra, come back with, is what it costs us.
Time. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the Board of Corrections' report? All right. There is no need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, Larry.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. That was a very good report. I did look up the documentation behind it last night, and I have a few questions and things to point out. Very good video there. It looked like a grand party, but I don't know whether I want to pay for parties. That was another association meeting of national association people and various things on a national basis. No reason why you couldn't have had a party just amongst the Douglas County and city people or regional people here, but why do we have to, I don't know, maybe go off to a national association meeting somewhere for it and listen to them, be influenced and powered by them? Have a good time, yes. People deserve it, but not at our expense. I noticed Don Bacon in the background there, too, with a, a flag behind him, saying something about a national association. And the meeting itself was the American Jail Association, not the Douglas County or city. So, I would imagine that you were influenced to a certain extent by those people. Outsiders, not us. We weren't invited. I guess it's all part of the justice reform on the national liberal agenda. During the reading and documentation, I was struck by this, and I don't know what it means, because he, I don't think he talked about it. I had a hard time hearing again. And right under a speaker, I asked him to turn it up, but he didn't. 92 inmates or somebody were released into the community, I guess, or put on house arrest in what was referred to as therapeutic community housing units. Do the, don't the citizens have a right to know where those are? I'd like to know if there's one in my neighborhood, but I guess we're not entitled. Usually, he presents everything in a grand video presentation with charts they hand out. And, you know, I, I respect everything that he does. He's got a, a good job. I'm just saying, put a little more of the power in the citizens' hands. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the Board of Corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we had a motion by Commissioner Rogers and a second by Commissioner Morgan.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting and the Board of Corrections budget meeting held Tuesday, July 11, 2023. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, July 25, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Did you have a question on the minutes or the items?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I'd like to rise to a point of personal privilege.
Okay. Can you wait till we get to citizen comments?
Well, it's a point of personal privilege, not a comment. I would like to remind everybody who hasn't been outside these chambers recently that the construction noise is awfully loud out there. If people in these chambers could minimize their going in and out so we can hear one another, that is the purpose of these meetings, after all. So, that's.
Sir, can you identify yourself, please?
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, can you identify yourself, please?
For those of you who haven't heard me recently, my name is Ford Momarts, 1511 Farnham, number 508.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And motion passes seven to zero.
Next is consent agenda. Items A through K. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers and second by Commissioner Friend. And I, I just, again, have a question on these SRO numbers. If someone could come down and, so the first one is for the Elkhorn Public Schools, and the numbers are like 121, 024, 80 for the first year, and then it goes up.
The reason for that is that's the Elkhorn Middle School District.
Sir, can you identify yourself?
Richard Lowly, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. And they have two SROs. So, if you notice the DC West High School, that's 60,000 some odd dollars for the first year, say. And if you look at the first year for Elkhorn Middle Schools, that's doubled, because there's two officers there, two deputies.
So, the, so there's three pieces or three things here. One, that says the 121 a year, 121 and change.
Correct.
And then, and that equates to 50,455 annually?
No. If you look at, if, to try to draw the comparison, it makes sense. If you look at the DC West number, which for the first year is 60,000 some odd dollars.
60,000, right.
That's one SRO. If you look at the Elkhorn Middle Schools, there's two SROs. So, if you double that 60,000 number, that's where you come up with your 121 for the middle schools.
Where does the 50,455 come from?
There should be no 50.
Is that the old, maybe that's the old contract?
It should not be fit, it, what you have in front of you says 50,000?
Behind the North Ridge Middle School, Grandview Middle School, Elkhorn Ridge Middle School.
No, the first number should be in, should be 121.
That was the previous one?
Right.
Okay. So, they're, they're all the same, basically, except for one has one SRO and one has two.
Correct. And again, if you look at the DC West contract, that has one SRO, and then you look at, and look at that number, and then look at the Elkhorn Middle Schools, that high number, I, I just doubled the DC.
What the annual.
The DC West, because there's two SROs there.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on consent items? Teresa?
I was, Sierra County Attorney's Office. Are you looking at the Elkhorn Resolution? Is that where you're?
It was in, it was from last week.
Okay, I have the same hold. Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other questions on the consent? There was a motion and a second.
Madam, would you, Madam Chair, would you mind repeating who made the motion, second for me, please?
Commissioner Rogers made the motion. Commissioner Friend seconded it.
Thank you.
Again, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we have one recognition, and I don't believe Mark is with us today, but Mark Meyer from the County Engineers Office, who's worked there for 27 years, is retiring. We thank Mark for his service and dedication to Douglas County and the citizens, and hope that he enjoys his retirement. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I apologize for being a sour old man, but I want to complain once again. Gentleman just came up here interrupting you, Mary Ann, and was not called out of order.
Nope, he wasn't.
Asked for special privileges. And last week, you granted other people special privileges, the gentleman that is sitting with that gentleman, but you denied me. And I don't like that. That's treating other people differently. Onto another topic.
Okay.
I attended a meeting last night of the Nebraska Voters for Associating Voter Accuracy Project. I don't necessarily agree with them, their methods, but they are another group, a lot of them nationwide, that are going county to county, talking about the irregularities and maybe stolen election. They do have the facts. The machines and the use of the machines is a threat to our election system. Maybe you people don't know that, because you don't listen. But I'm going to present something from them that I don't necessarily agree with, but here's the thing. County to county, you're seeing people do this, now if you're paying attention. Their own wording, this is not mine. This is a document they're asking us to present to you or talk to you about. But they don't understand the word presentation versus citizen comments. They've been here before. Citizen comments is three to five minutes, if you don't get interrupted. Presentations are, you can go on and on if you let them. Okay? But this says, this is a clear legal notice of constitutional and statutory duty and obligation to perform honest, comprehensive, and transparent due diligence in securing the legal right to vote and accurate and forensically auditable accounting of votes cast and investigation with prosecution of voting fraud. So, you guys are on notice. I don't know why none of them are here today. I guess they expected me to do their job for them. This is the second week in a row. So, I don't know that they have any more importance than I do, but I wish that you would organize a presentation for us to come up here and have all morning if we need, and call up Brian Cruz and the various election officials across the state, including the Attorney General or Secretary of State, I mean, as the opponents, so that we can come back after they speak, they get only one time, and refute what they said. That's the way things work in these chambers, apparently. We, the people, want that opportunity to be the presenters, and I've requested that a, a number of times in writing and also with the microphone. And I would like, Dan, if you could copy those, I couldn't get my printer to copy those today. Those are not my words, by the way. The other thing is something that Mr. Robert Borer, I think, has a lot more credibility and skin in the game than the people representing the Voters Accuracy Project, because he did run for Secretary of State, of course, lost, and he also ran a write-in campaign for governor and lost.
One minute.
But there's some questions about that, and he has been denied many times requests for public documents under the law and been request, been denied. That needs to be talked about in these chambers. Okay? Please arrange something and maybe do it by multi-county, three or four counties, I suggest, in writing, presented in Douglas, Sarpy, Lancaster, and Dodge. And then, maybe the rest of them will get that idea across the state and save the taxpayers a lot of money, instead of having each Board of Commissioners tied up in the process, the same topic, the same people presenting. So, let's do that. I challenge you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Ed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street. I want to repeat something I've said before. I'm a retired lawyer, senior status merits, so I can't represent anybody by rule, but I can speak in the public forum, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, I don't carry water for any client, because I can't. And once again, I speak to the Blue Jay Alternative, which I don't think is probably going to be addressed by Pravanda in this short $15,000 walkthrough that he's going to do, but should be, because it would be the second alternative that must be connected and compared to the other two, to see which is better. And I say the Blue Jay, Jay Alternative is risk-free and benefit-rich, far more than either other alternative that you might have. Once again, it takes that million dollars of freebie and then takes some money for manpower and hands-on help to captive patients, which is a great situation. These young men and women in prison with, say, and I really do like working on substance abuse issues, because what you learn in jail with a really good program, and in the follow-up, they talk about, you go out in the community and there's so much service available that's cheap, and it's also built on developing one's own personal responsibility to deal with their demons, something that isn't too expensive. Now, people will fail, but when you're dealing with a schizophrenic, that's going to be a lifelong thing, a bipolar lifelong thing, resource-demanding. You get more bang for your buck. I do, I got my glasses, so I do want to read what both the county attorney and Pravanda have said, and it comes right straight out of the Code of Regulations, Federal, CFR, Code of Federal Regulations. And this one is 4391. It has to do with this escance with which they look at jail. "Constructing new correctional facility would generally not be a proportional response to an increase in the rate of certain crimes or overall crime, as most correctional facilities have historically accommodated fluctuations in occupancy. In addition, construction of new congregate facilities, which would generally be expected to involve expenditures greater than $1 million, would generally not be a proportional response to mitigate or prevent COVID-19. Because such construction is generally expected to be more costly than alternative approaches or capitalist expenditures, that may be equally or more effectively in decreasing the spread of the disease or addressing mental health." I just added, "or addressing mental health like the Blue Jay Plan." The Code of Regulations does not say that. I say that, and I commend you to really think hard on that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Ford Momarts, 1511 Farnham. I'm hearing feedback of some sort. Can you guys all hear me? Can you gentle people all hear me? Okay. First of all, I would like to speak in your defense. I did not ask for special privileges. I rose on a point of personal privilege. It's a parliamentary procedure. That's a system that is recognized around the world. And Madam Chairman was gracious enough to acknowledge it in a worldwide manner. I was not taking advantage of any special privileges of the Board. And Larry, if you paid attention to me as much as everyone does to you, you would have known my name already. I also have been told that I have been somewhat obscure in my references. When I refer to the Satan Francis House, I am referring to the Sienna Francis House. When I refer to the inmates, I'm referring to the people who are trapped there because they have no place else to go. And I hope that clarifies any misunderstanding that you folks may have had so far. I can't think of anything else at this point that I have to clarify. At this point, there are other issues of that place that I would like to speak further about and to clarify. But out of the goodness of my heart, I'm going to cut it short today and let you people go early. It's, I used to be a teacher, so I'm being gracious out of that. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. You all have a blessed week.
Thank you, you too. Anyone else?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Good morning. It's a nice day, a nice rainy day. Glad to be here. I recently had a conversation about the elections in the United States. And Larry keeps coming forward. He, Larry, thinks I'm ignoring him. So I'm going to finally address something he's trying to talk to me about or talk to us about. So the conversation was that the elections in the United States are insufficient. They may be fraudulent, that somehow we should have Donald Trump as president right now. And that's completely wrong. But this person that I was having this conversation with wasn't convinced by it. So all I could do was say, well, locally, here in Nebraska and Douglas County, we have fair and open elections. And he couldn't argue against me on that because I said, have you, you know, have you talked to the Douglas County Election Commissioner about it? You, he, this Commissioner comes forward and reports before the election occurs and after the election occurs. He says we have fair and open elections here in Douglas County. I am convinced that throughout the United States, we have similar conditions for elections. And it's unfortunate people like Larry want to come forward here when he should be going to a court to, before a judge or something like that. But what Larry is doing is trying to diminish the quality of the elections because he doesn't agree with the outcome. And that's sad. That is irresponsible of him. And he should understand when people are winners and people are losers. And people like him, when they talk about the 2020 elections, they're sore losers, like Donald Trump. And the media gives them play. And I don't know why the media wants to give them play. But that, that's what I think of it. So if he wants me to tell him, if Larry wants me to tell him that he's a sore loser, I can, but I don't want to do that. So that's why I ignore a lot of the issues that he wants to talk to me about. So moving on, what I want to talk about is the proposals on the mental health addition to corrections and the other proposals regarding $50 million of ARPO funding. I am still convinced that you've had plenty of proposals regarding this issue. And if others disagree with that, maybe they should specify reasons as to why those proposals are insufficient. If they want to talk about blueprints in those proposals, I would say that that's not a place for those proposals, like actual blueprints, blueprints that you have before you construct something. What the proposals
One minute.
were about is taking the Board's work on one direction or this other direction. It's not about going to the front end and providing all the details. It's about following a process. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during this? No, Larry, sit down. No, Larry, thank you. We'll move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is regarding the proposed approval of a golf car ordinance to allow golf cars to be driven within SID 578. There has been a request for this one to be laid over until the SID Board of Trustees has further review. Is there a motion to lay this over? And it would be laid well until they bring it back because they, they will let us know when they want it back on the agenda.
Tracy here, County Attorney's Office. Yes, you'll have to republish.
Right. Commissioner Friend.
Madam Chair, can you repeat that? So the SID is asking for layover?
To, yes, until the SID Board has a chance to review it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So is there a motion to lay over?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions or comments?
I do, Madam Chair. So do we ever open the public hearing or we're? I just want to make sure if we're voting, does the public hearing be closed? Or can we make this motion to lay over during the public hearing?
I just stated it was a public hearing. I didn't open it, so...
I don't think she opened it. So I think, I think it'd be fine either way. But probably that's the better way to do it, is not open it, just go ahead and lay it over. And I think that's, I think that's where we're at.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Right.
Okay.
Please vote.
One moment, please. Sorry, Commissioners. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kent. Motion to lay over passes seven to zero.
Next is Boyce Farms. I think I said it right. "Special use permit to operate a landscape business on a property located at 2510 Camille Road, Waterloo, Nebraska 68069." This is the public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this item would come forward now. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Before we get into the public hearing, I did want to take kind of a point of personal privilege and introduce our new planning and zoning coordinator. Laura Dietrich is here today, kind of observing. We get her up to speed. But anxious, very happy to have Laura on board, and I can unload a few things off my plate onto hers. And so, welcome to...
Well, welcome.
Good morning, thank you for having me.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So we will, you will hear from Laura probably on future items. Today, I will handle the, the three public hearings that we have today. So the first one is for Boyce Farms. And just to give you a little bit of geography here, this is just north of Highway 92 West Center Road, just on the east side of the Platte River, off of Camp and Hill Road. And the site plan here, basically, everything is very well screened away from Camp and Hill Road. And I would ask that if you can see where the cursor is right here, I'm going to show you a couple of pictures. And I'm actually standing on the road right here. And you can see that everything is well screened. You really can't even tell that there's a landscape business here. So to, to put this in context, a few months ago, I approached you with some changes to the, to the zoning regulations, which really tried to address some of the, some of the issues that were going on in rural Douglas County, where we had businesses that were now on rural residential lots and parcels. And this is a part of the process of taking non-conforming uses and really making them legal so that it helps the property owners from a business standpoint. And it also helps us from a regulatory standpoint of knowing kind of what, what they're supposed to be doing and maybe what they're not supposed to be doing. So in this case, a very well-defined site plan. There is no intent by the property owners to expand on that. If anything, they'll probably kind of size their, their operation down in the future. The only other aspect of the special use permit is really that it'll expire if they sell the property. The use does not go with the property. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions that the Board might have too. And I know you opened the public hearing.
This is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? There is a motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Boyle. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is Dan McColsky, applicant for a special use permit to operate a landscape business on the property located at 27727 Pacific in Waterloo, Nebraska 68069. This is the public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this item. Kent?
Again, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. And I'm going to do basically the same dog and pony show that I just did for Boyce Farms. The address here, 27727 Pacific Street. The, the previous application with Boyce Farms was down here right off of Center Street, not West Center Road. This one, again, if you, if you look at the, the site plan that's being proposed right there at the corner, this is a, a small property. It is right next to Pacific and right next to Camp and Hill Road. The, the owner, Mr. McColsky, is proposing to put a, a new fence along the south side of the border to screen it from the properties to the south. You can see the, these are the various property owners here in the black font. The building right here on site, and I'm going to circle back to that and have a couple of comments on it here in a minute. The storage here, there is a berm along Pacific Street, which helps to hide this. I'm going to be taking, showing you some pictures from approximately this location right here. So I'm looking here, it shows some employee parking, the building that I just mentioned, view to the south, and then the lower left-hand corner, kind of a view looking from the intersection of Pacific and Camp and Hill. Again, not a lot of materials there showing. If you're looking straight east from Camp and Hill Road, you can see some material storage there. Mr. McColsky is asking not to have a screening there. If you go back to the lower left-hand corner picture, you'll see next to the building on the very right side of the picture, an RV. He's making accommodations for his neighbor to kind of actually park on his property. So that helps to kind of hide that RV from, from public view as well. So we, we view that as a, as a very beneficial thing. We appreciate him working with his neighbor like that. Wanted to point out a couple of different and unique things about this property. First off is that Mr. McColsky actually lives at 2304 Camp and Hill Road, just down, down the road from this property. And at one point, there were some, some vehicle storage and, and material storage at that property. Making it very clear in the, in the awarding of the special use permit that all of the landscape operation that is physically outside needs to be at 27727 Pacific Street. The 2304 Camp and Hill Road, certainly if they're doing office work, things like that inside, that's perfectly acceptable. That is spelled out in the, in the conditions here. The other aspect that I wanted to point out was the building at 27727 Pacific Street actually was constructed, or actually was permitted in air by the county. That was several years ago. And the circumstances behind that are kind of irrelevant at this point. But we did permit that in air, issued the building permit in air. That building technically is non-conforming and stays non-conforming. But we are allowing this particular use because it makes sense there. And his particular use of this building for the landscape business is perfectly fine. I did want to put, put in and for the record in the special use permit that this particular exception, the fact that we messed up in administering and awarding the permit, does not mean that we're going to do this for other properties. So that's one thing that I just want to make very clear. And that's also stated in the special use permit. The only other issue is, is then that the special use permit would go away if the property is sold. Same, same condition as with Boyce Farms. So with that, entertaining any questions you may have? I believe Mr. McColsky is also on the Zoom call. So if we had any questions for him.
Okay. Karen, can you see if, just reduce that for a minute so I can see if there's... This is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? And good morning, Mr. McColsky. We do see that you're still on here. So again, anyone wishing to speak for or against? I will close the public hearing then. What is the will of the Board? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Boyle. Sorry, didn't look at the lights first.
So I'd said a couple of questions. First, if you're, I don't know that area well enough. But if you're on the Platte River, can you see this, this property? It looks like it's still pretty far away and it would have to cross Camp and Hill Road.
No, if you, if you're physically on the river, you wouldn't be able to see this because there is a berm, which is, gosh. If you can go to... From the, from the southeast, the, the lower left-hand corner picture, if, to my back is a berm. And that berm is, is probably 10 feet higher than me. So, no, I, I can't see. If I turned around right there, I could not see the river at all.
Okay. And then as far as the, the photo on the bottom right, I'm, I'm just trying to think. I know that, that he doesn't want to build anything there to kind of decrease the, the visual there. Will people driving along the road see, see that or?
They will see some of that, yes.
Okay. And what is the opposition to putting up some type of barrier there?
Well, the opposition, really why he didn't want to put any type of a barrier up there is that if you look at the lower left-hand, hand corner picture, he's making accommodations for his neighbor to actually pull his RV on the east side of his building and park there. The property line is actually like right next, it would probably bisect the RV. So if he puts some type of a, of a barrier... So if he puts some type of a barrier up here, he's going to be taking away some of this storage space and things there. So we see that as a reasonable accommodation. I think, given the fact that there are trees here and trees that you're not really seeing here on this side, you're not really noticing it that much as you make that turn. I mean, you really have to turn your head and look to see that. It's not, in my estimation, incredibly visible. I can certainly have the conversation with him again about screening there, but we have not had specific complaints about that. And again, I think it's a reasonable accommodation for what he's doing with his neighbor.
Okay. So he's accommodating his neighbor by keeping it that way?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Kent, I would imagine we have at least one person on this county board that would love to answer this question, so I might talk to him afterward, or he can weigh in on it. When we, and I think I've talked to you about this, when we put these special use permits in on property like this, is there, for the owner, is there a possibility of adversely affecting their market value? So they put, let's say five years from now, one of these folks wanted to sell this property, can they communicate to a potential buyer, "Look, all you need to do is get with Kent and the county, you can get another special use permit," particularly if they're going to be in the landscaping business and they sell it to somebody in that regard? If they're not, and somebody, I just said, "Look, I think this is a good investment." Do I have a problem going, trying to get rid of that property? Because somebody goes, "No, I don't want, I'm not going to touch that with a, you know, a 20-foot pole." I mean, there's all kinds of county restrictions associated with this. You see where I'm going with this? I, we're putting a special use permit on this. It's not going to be effective going forward if he sells, if he or she sells the property. What type of market effect does that have? I mean, what have you seen in the past?
I'm not sure that there's really going to be much of one. I think what you'll see, I mean, again, if somebody's selling the property and they are selling it to someone who wants to have a landscape business, then, and that needs to be disclosed. And if they come to us and say, "Okay, well, hey, we want to continue that," and, you know, in some cases, we may not know when the property is sold. There isn't any kind of a notification that's going to pop up to us, other than we may see a "for sale" sign or something there on the property. So I don't know that I'm addressing your question necessarily, but I, there's an opportunity for the landscape use to continue. They would just have to get a special use permit to be able to do that, that addresses their particular operation.
No, you did address it, Kent, and my question was irrelevant, so that, it was. Thank you. I appreciate the input. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Kent, thanks for this. Real quick, and this will come up in the later item. This is in the flood plain, right?
Correct. It's in the flood fringe.
And that big flood that we had a few years ago, this property go underwater?
I don't know the answer to that right offhand. I could...
It seemed to me like almost everything between the two rivers went underwater.
To some extent.
Okay. We'll get to this a little later, but the new regulations call for, you know, some protections to be put up on development properties in that area. Has anything specifically been put up to mitigate flood damage on this particular property?
The buildings would have had, had to have been built to the appropriate elevation. And right now, that elevation is two foot. If it's an inhabited structure, it has to be two feet above what's called the base flood elevation. The base flood elevation generally is determined on a site-by-site basis in most of the county's jurisdiction.
Okay. When were these structures actually constructed?
This one, I believe, was within the last 10 years.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for or against? This is, again, the public hearing on this application. Let me, yeah, just in case. Okay. I will close then the public hearing. And what is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is consideration and approval of text amendments to the zoning regulations flood plain overlay district. The applicant is our Douglas County Environmental Services. This is the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this item. Kent?
Good morning again, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Just giving you a little bit of context with this, initially, we set out to update the flood plain overlay district regulations to comply with a couple of changes that were made to the zoning regulations a couple of years ago. And one of those was to adjust the provision for ag building exemptions. It was stated as 20 acres, and now it's a minimum 80-acre parcel size for that exemption to kick in. So that was one of the changes there. In the process, we also, whenever we make or recommend changes to the flood plain regulation, we run those through the Papio NRD, who serves as kind of our pro bono consultant on flood plain issues. And then also, the Department of Natural Resources at the state and FEMA, who we just need to make sure that they are concurring with our proposed regulation changes. And in the process of doing that, both the DNR and FEMA had some, mainly the Department of Natural Resources, had some wording changes that they wished us to incorporate. And so those have been incorporated. If you have the red line version in front of you, you can see exactly what those were. We didn't have any concerns with them. They really helped to spell out a number of different things that make the regulation, I think, more enforceable and easier to administer. So we didn't have any concerns with that. I'm happy to go over those in detail if you'd like, but at this point, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
This is the public hearing. Karen, can you switch it back to the... This is the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this item. Seeing none, I will close the public... Oh, sorry, didn't have my light back on. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks. Going back to what we mentioned on that previous property, so floods are foreseeable, particularly in this area between the two rivers. My understanding is that the flood plain district proposal includes, and I think that's been there for some time, that requires the uses, that use is vulnerable to floods, be provided with flood protection at the time of initial construction. And there's a bunch of development in here that maybe even predates this regulation. Are those kind of grandfathered in, or what's the status of those?
Yes, those would be technically non-conforming to the regulation. They are allowed to continue as long as they don't increase the non-conformity, if that makes some sense. Basically, if there's, you know, in the terms of the landscape business, for example, they have a given footprint, and so as long as they don't expand that, they're not increasing any kind of non-conformity. So if a building that was built pre-flood regulations wanted to expand, they would have to show that they're not increasing the non-conformity of that.
So, and I've been out, and I'm sure you have as well, to some of these lake communities, very nice houses. If I was going to add in addition to my house, would I come under this requirement that I'd have to?
You would need to make, to meet the elevation requirements primarily. If you are building in a flood fringe area, you need to be, for our regulation, two feet above the base flood elevation. And if you, we already have an elevation certificate for a particular building that shows that, and you're not trying to put an inhabited floor below that elevation, then there probably isn't going to be any issue with issuing a building permit and you expanding that, as long as you meet the other kind of setbacks and the other things that are involved.
Okay. So that, when you're talking particularly in section 8.052, no first-person firm or corporation shall initiate any flood plain development or substantial improvement. That's what you're talking about. The substantial improvements would be subject to the same requirements as new construction.
Correct. If there is a building that's being proposed in a flood plain area, there needs to be a flood plain development permit. That is basically the vetting of, is it at the proper elevation and so on? So that is a specific permit.
I appreciate that. So the proper elevation that you've mentioned here, is the primary requirement of this flood plain mitigation requirement?
That's the initial requirement. There are some ways to build without meeting that elevation, ag structures that are not inhabited and so on. And there's some floodproofing-type things that I believe can be done with a building that also would negate having to elevate the building above the base flood elevation.
Like what?
You could have a structure built so that floodwaters would be designed to flow through it.
Did we find in this last big flood that this two-foot elevation was effective in keeping these structures from flooding?
I believe so. For the most part, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No further lights? Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Nice to meet you as well.
Next is our committee discussion and actions. The first is the Budget Finance Committee, the budget report as presented. Next, we'll move to community services, and that is setting public hearing dates for Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, to consider the three proposed golf course ordinance in Newport, the Heritage, and Stratford Park.
Yes.
There's actually six of them.
There's...
There's Anchor Point, Majestic Point, Newport Hill...
Oh, I see.
Newport Landing, Pine Creek, Heritage, and Stratford Park.
Thank you for that clarification. And so, is there a motion to set the public hearing date as Tuesday, August 8th, 2023? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the Human Resources Committee, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for...
Contract negotiation, litigation, legal advice, and labor negotiations, please.
Before we go into executive session, please note the board will not meet on Tuesday, July 25th. The next scheduled meeting for the board will be August 1st, 2023. Is there a motion to go into executive session for reasons stated? Is there a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion passes seven to zero to reconvene and adjourn at eleven twenty-three AM.
(Music)